I make a motion we approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. So everybody should have an agenda in front of them. If you don't, there's some sitting over there on the side of Commissioner Logan.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Who wants to go first? Do we have anything from the department or the commission liaison
Mr. Chair, I can just make a comment. I think at our last meeting, if I recall, we had the permit for the cannabis retail dispensary that was through based upon recommendations. And I think that was it. We had some discussion on food truck vendors as well that I think may be coming back around for some more discussions within the city.
Yep. Yep. Mr. Chair, and yeah, just piggybacking off of what Councilmember Lottgren said. Yeah, we get a lot of interest from the cannabis world here in Oak Park Heights. I think that's not a surprise to you all, just with our proximity here to the highway proximity of Wisconsin. Thriving business corridor. I mean, people want to be here. And so, yes, the council did approve that one. I imagine that we'd have, we'll have at least, you know, another one and probably more. We're allowing up to four here in the city. And so, we'll see how that shakes out. But there's always constant interest in our corridor, which is great. The other update that I had for the Planning Commission was just on our well from a development standpoint. So, the city is drilling a third well. For those that are not familiar with that, that is over by the Quick Trip on the west side of town. So, that is moving along very well. They're going to be doing some test pumping. Our well drilling company is going to be doing test pumping here shortly. I'm anxious to see too of just where we land from a PFAS standpoint in that well. We do have PFAS, as I think all our residents are aware, below the federal level, which is good in our wells one and two. Well three, we'll know later this fall where that lands and will proceed accordingly. So, very pleased that that is moving forward. It is also subject to a federal grant. Been in communication with our representative at the federal level. Don't see any issue with our money being tied up at a federal level for that project. Anticipate actually getting money here very shortly. It's a reimbursable grant. And so, as we incur expenses, that's how we get reimbursed for that project. So, moving along well behind the scenes here, I hadn't had an update on good for the city council for one of us to be there. So I would be opposed to changing that. And if you do change it to May, then we should leave it out, because anybody may attend the city council meeting, so.
I was kind of thinking the same thing, not to the semantics of shall, should, or need to, it's like a, we recommend a person be there, because even though there's the three of you that you listed that do attend now and can be there for those meetings, being on this side of the table, there has been times where it's probably appropriate, we can be there, represent, stand at the podium and provide some insight. So instead of May, I might recommend that we put recommend to represent or something along those lines. It's my two cents, like if there's something on the agenda.
It needs to be an as-needed basis, right?
Yeah.
It needs to be, but we do that automatically when there's something like that. We always make sure one of us is there if there's something going on that we need to be there, otherwise.
If there's nothing in the last few months, sure, you can attend, but if there's something on the agenda, we should probably have someone there, so recommend if we have something on the agenda type language.
So commissioners, something along the lines of it is recommended that each Planning Commission member represent the Planning Commission at regular city council meetings? Something, something like that?
Needs to be non-binding, but it needs to, because otherwise we're legally, is correct, we're in violation of our own bylaws right now, so it needs to be non-binding, but it needs to be a recommendation that if there's something on the agenda that we anticipate questions for, we need to be available to answer those questions.
Maybe instead of each of the A Planning Commissioning member is recommended to represent the Planning Commission at a regular city council meetings when there's a PC agenda item, something. Because each at the beginning is implying that all of us need to be there.
Yeah.
And then the follow-up on the existing language is in turn, so I feel like if we're getting rid of the rotational aspect of that, you take out each, say A, we have had success during one of these sessions to say, hey, who can go? Typically, Mr. Kramer's there. With him going over to Amory, they'd just say, hey, who can go?
So it is recommended that a Planning Commission member represent the Planning Commission at regular city council meetings? How does that sound?
I think he wants if, if there is a Planning Commission.
If there's a.
We can do that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think you got it.
Other than that, I think it looks great, Jacob. Thank you for going through this and working on this.
I did have one other one, I don't want to be that guy.
I know what you want to leave. Go.
Okay, so I'm just thinking back to like the final eight, Article VIII E.
Eight E.
I'm reflecting on certain individuals who have had a, something before us, but they didn't have a representative. So if there's not an architect or they themselves, what do we do? Because we're saying that unless that applicant or petitioner appears personally or by representation, if no one is here to represent them, technically, we shouldn't even be talking about it as a item.
But we.
Well, if we do schedule a public hearing, we still have to hold the public hearing.
Yeah.
But then our recommendation is null, because we don't, we're, the way I'm understanding this.
Happening, though, there's always someone.
This says unless there's satisfactory explanation, so I think that would be the only kind of.
So I don't remember if it was the Stagecoach condo or one of those apartments on 58th, but there was one of those sessions where we didn't have someone from the applicant here.
Then what the Planning Commission should do, if there's a lot of questions that you have and there's no applicant, you should continue to the next meeting.
And you just table it.
Yeah.
Continue.
In that situation, Commissioner Husby, in that situation, we didn't have, the petitioner was not here, but the petitioner's representative was here, so their engineer was here.
Yeah.
If we're thinking about the same situation, the Stagecoach item, so that is still permissible under the bylaws. Essentially, how I read this for the bylaws is there has to be someone here representing the petitioner if the petitioner's not here.
And if there's no one, then we table it.
Then we, yep, it'd be continued.
Without a good excuse, good reason.
Yep. Okay.
And I don't know, in my experience, I, for Planning Commission, I mean, someone has always been, has always shown up, I mean, they have an interest in it.
It's very rare that.
All good, thank you.
I hope we accept the changes in the bylaws as laid out by Mr. Reif and as changed by us tonight.
I think we got to recommend that we recommend the city council to approve those.
Yeah, I was gonna, I don't think this is a.
Amend that, because it's a recommendation to the council, isn't it? We can't do that.
Yeah, I think it goes to the council, I'll double check.
Yeah, it should go to the council.
Yeah.
Can we friendly amend that, Mr. Kramer?
I hope you would.
So, so the motion is we are going to recommend to the city council the changes spoken about and the changes that Jacob had put in the bylaw adjustments to the city council for approval. Correct?
Suggested, yes.
Suggested. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
Great job.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same size.
Thank you for your stellar work, Mr. Reif.
Motion carries. All right, old business? Seeing none. Do we have any informational stuff going on?
This could very well be my last Planning Commission meeting. I thank all of you for your patience and for accepting me and being tolerant of me and for your, all of your encouragement. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service to your community.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for all your years of service, since you've been doing it since you said twelve, twelve, right? That's what you said?
I have no idea.
No, we really appreciate everything you've done. Right, I say a little sad that you're going to bail out before we can like officially say thank you in a meeting now, since you dropped the bomb on us today. Have fun in Wisconsin, don't become a Packer fan.
I'm psyching out the council meetings over there.
No, we appreciate everything you've done for us over the years, so. I would entertain a motion to, for adjournment?
So moved.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning Commission meeting is closed at 6:31.
Thanks for staying after we got through your topic. You guys didn't have to do that.